I just had one in my eye, was coming to see if somebody had.
Okay.
I have allergy eyedrops.
You need time for what's on?
Hello.
No, I didn't know, I didn't, if you, where are you?
Here.
It's here.
I have allergy eyedrops.
I have ki- oh, no, I thought you said cancer.
Alright, good afternoon, everybody. Um, so at the meeting, one o'clock. Uh, first time, what do you mean of the year? Let's go around the, uh, room for the record, Chris Rogers, County Board.
Sean Coonfair, Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center.
Kim Havikati, Deputy County Administrator of our Juvenile Justice. Whatever that all they can, I could never remember it.
Janay Pancook, Operation Youth Success, the easy one.
Marc Flory, Douglas County Youth Center.
Brad Alexander, Youth Center.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator.
Ken Dollar, Douglas County Clerk.
Shelly Salt, Judge, I coordinator for Douglas County.
Um, you all need to be on the record since you're gonna present, so you wanna say your name?
Uh, Lindsay Vino, Category One Consulting.
Sarah Roberts, County category one consultant.
Laura Lee, County category one consultant.
Robert Simmons, County Attorney.
Um, anybody over there as guests, you can, if you want to, you don't, we're not required to. Okay, we'll go to item one, it's the review of the Juvenile Justice, the Juvenile Assessment Center's external evaluation. So, just to set the stage with this, I'm gonna turn to you, Category One.
Oh, do you wanna, I, I wanted to just say a couple words.
Well, let me, uh, then I'll turn it over to you, just to set the stage, this is close to a year. Probably sometime a year, little over a year ago, this presentation was given the tee up to the fact that they were gonna use this year evaluation to come back. And now, back and with that, I'll give it over to Sean.
Uh, I just wanted to say, a lot of folks in this room have seen the year one, and I just wanted to thank Category One for the diligent way that they've gone about this assessment. We've not experienced anything like this in the past with evaluators. Your attention to detail, ensuring that you understood things correctly, asking questions of stakeholders to make sure that you really had a grasp on what was happening. We just really appreciate the amount of time and effort you all put into the evaluation. And also, a thank you to Sherwood Foundation for funding the evaluation. Um, without them, we would not have been able to have this kind of robust look at the work of the JAC. So, um, are you ready to have them? Okay, so, um, I'm a horrible person to...
Well, introduce.
That's great.
Alright.
Need this taken?
Okay, thank you to Chris and Sean for kicking us off. Uh, like Fisher Rogers stated, we were here about a year ago with the Phase One overview of the Phase One process, as well as information about Phase Two. Um, and we're back to show you Phase Two findings, which Phase One was planning for an evaluation, Phase Two was conducting the evaluation. Um, so we're going to start off with a little bit of an overview of the Juvenile Assessment Center, or JAC as it's abbreviated. That way, anyone in the room who's not as fully familiar with what the JAC does, how they operate, et cetera, will have a little bit of an overview of that.
Okay, let me apologize one quick, just, just to set the stage. The whole agenda's about them, so there could be some of a dialogue, so if there's a burning question in the middle of it, we'll ask it, but if it gets held up to, then I'm actually move on and we'll pick that question up at the end. So, just know that, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, then we'll give a little bit of an overview of the evaluation study, the research questions, the data sources we looked at, and then we'll go into the evaluation findings, provide a brief overview of the recommendations we've made thus far, show you the full set of evaluation deliverables that were developed. Um, there is an appendix in here that we can show as well. And without further ado, we'll kind of kick things off. We do have a one pager that we've got copies for for the center table, if you wanna pass those out. The one pager kind of follows along with this slide deck. So, as Lindsay's passing those out, I'll provide just a brief overview of how this is structured. Um, you can see on the front page, there's an overview of the Juvenile Assessment Center. Then at the bottom left is a very brief study overview and the data sources we looked at. And then if you open it up Thank you. to the center, you have eight main findings, some of the results. And then on the back, we have our recommendations and a few more notes about the data details. And so, this part about the JAC overview corresponds with this first section right here. Um, so as you can see, um, the Douglas County, or, uh, the Juvenile Assessment Center is dedicated to improving the lives of juveniles by helping to strengthen and support children and families who are involved or at risk of becoming involved with the Juvenile Assessment Center. Um, they believe each juvenile should be supported based on individual risks and needs, and they work with the Douglas County Attorney's Office, as well as other community stakeholders, to implement the following four main activities. So, I won't go into detail on each one of these, but you can kind of see there that they assess youth to identify their risk, they recognize and address mental and behavioral needs, they divert all eligible youth from formal processing, and they collaborate with stakeholders to help improve the functioning of the Juvenile Justice System. This, uh, is kind of an overview of the pathway and process. The Juvenile Assessment Center is just one entity that sits inside of the Juvenile Justice System. So, we thought it would be somewhat important to try to explain how the Juvenile Assessment Center kind of moves kids through the process. Um, so, anything you can see in the balloon, we start with this citation, where the youth is formally cited and referred to the Douglas County Attorney's Office, or the DCAO. Um, they then move to the DCO where they're screened for legal sufficiency and JAC eligibility. If we go down, you can see that that's where the DCAO may decide to dismiss the case, and in that situation, there would be no further action for the youth and their charge would be sealed. Another, um, option is that they could move up in this pathway, where the DCAO, um, based on their screening, would refer the juvenile, um, refer to juvenile or adult court, again, based on the screening for legal sufficiency, and then, based on their decision there, they would have formal court process. They can also continue moving forward, where they would refer to the JAC and the JAC would conduct their assessment. We'll give a bit more detail in a few slides about the assessment process, and then, um, the JAC would also recommend action. They may also, once they come to the JAC and the JAC does their screening, may decide that they're actually ineligible for diversion and they would send them back to the DCAO. Um, and at that time, you could also have formal court processing. If they continue moving on with the pathway, the DCAO would again review and approve the diversion case plan, if that is what the JAC decided. And, um, they may end up, at that point, still kind of dropping off the process, where they would get a nolay pross or a warning letter, and again, have no further action, and their charge would be sealed. And you're seeing a lot of these drop offs at the bottom, because the goal is to divert from formal court processing, and that decision may happen along the pathway. Um, if they continue moving forward, um, the JAC would inform, uh, the family and implement their diversion plan. The youth would be placed on a plan, and the JAC would work with the youth and family um, to do referrals to community-based services, um, have check-ins with the youth and family to provide support. Um, and then eventually, the goal would be that the JAC, um, and youth would work together and the youth would complete diversion successfully, and their charge would be sealed. Um, the plans vary based on need, um, and again, the youth would reserve services through the community-based providers. If the youth does not complete the diversion requirements, they would go back to the DCAO, and at that point, they would review again and formal court processing may be possible. And again, like Fisher Rogers said, if you have any questions at any point through the process, feel free to let us know and we can answer those. Uh, we also thought it was important to point out that the Juvenile Assessment Center has four main case types. Um, those are listed up here, so you can see that youth who have a delinquency charge, delinquency is one case type, and these kind of charges are typically things like theft or shoplifting, assault, drug use or possession. And as you'll notice, um, as Lindsay starts going through some of the results, that the JAC focused mostly on delinquency cases in its early years. The second case type is truancy, um, and so this is youth that have school-related truancies, which is defined as twenty or more absences. And the JAC started reviewing truancy referrals in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and they also partner with the DCAO to review, um, all cases, all truancy-related cases, to understand what the, um, I guess, factors that are contributing to truancy are. Our third case is dual-involved, and so this is youth that have one of those first two case types, delinquency or truancy, but are also involved in the child welfare system. And then the final case type is parent referral, and this is youth that don't actually have a formal charge, but a, um, family member or guardian would be referring them directly to the Douglas County Attorney's Office, who then refers them to the Juvenile Assessment Center for assessment, because they feel that they need assistance with their child, um, or family member. And you'll kind of notice up here and in some of the results that the number of parent referrals has significantly decreased over time, um, with the increase in services that are available in the community for people to access to directly. Alright, so now we're gonna go ahead, that was just a little bit about the JAC, go into our evaluation study overview. And so, we wanted to give a little bit of a background and origination. You can see up there, um, that the Douglas County strives to have an effective Juvenile Justice System, um, and the Director of the JAC, uh, Michelle Coonfair, requested this formal evaluation of the JAC's process, approach and impact, really to be able to answer questions from the community and understand their areas of strength, things that they need to improve upon, and their overall impact. So, this was something that was, um, asked for rather than, um, required. The overall purpose of the evaluation study was to assess the implementation of their process, the achievement of their outcomes, and really alignment to the JAC mission. And the process and outcome components, um, if you remember from a year ago, when we were here, were collaboratively defined by the JAC and Juvenile Justice stakeholders. So, in the Phase One, the first year of this process, we brought together a group of stakeholders um, from the JAC, the county, service providers, school districts, police, et cetera, and they collaboratively determined the research questions we would address, the data sources we would look at, um, and all the components of the evaluation study. Which is kind of what is stated right up at that bottom bullet. Alright, and then, you can see up there, we have three overarching research questions, or research question buckets. Um, the first one is around implementation. Is the JAC implementing activities with fidelity and in a manner that aligns with guiding principles? Those guiding principles will also determine during Phase One. Impact is the JAC achieving the intended outcomes, such as building trust with youth, addressing youth needs, decreasing, uh, recidivism. And then finally, do we see any differences in implementation or impact based on age, gender, or race ethnicity of the youth? And then you'll see on the next slide that those three buckets of questions actually get, um, down to twenty-one specific questions that we looked at. We ran a lot of different analyses, um, both quantitative and qualitative, to answer all of the questions, and we tried our best to transform the findings into data visualizations that can tell a story of the findings. Um, all findings are reported in aggregate. We did that to make sure we're protecting the confidentiality of participants, um, both stakeholders as well as youth guardians. And then finally, um, you'll notice that there are data notes provided on the slides, as well as some data notes on the back of this one pager, that provide a little bit more detail about the, um, the data structure and context. Finally, we looked at five main sources of data for the evaluation study. The first one is internal documents. Um, Sean and Yosef were gracious enough to send us a lot of different documents. Um, we reviewed over eighty of them, such as brochures, reports, fact sheets, et cetera, to gain a thorough understanding of the JAC. Uh, we did a comprehensive review of the literature, looking at over a hundred articles from Juvenile Justice and Assessment literature, spanning best practices, academic sources, et cetera. The citation list is at the end of this document, and the full reference list is in the toolkit we built. We also conducted forty face-to-face interviews with stakeholders, um, staff from the JAC, policymakers, funders, providers, as well as personnel from the courts and schools, and then twenty interviews with youth and guardian pairs. We gathered and analyzed a significant amount of data from the JAC, as well as Douglas County. And then finally, we developed and distributed a survey to youth and guardians um, who had interacted with the JAC in the first six months of two thousand and nineteen. And we actually got responses from a hundred and seventy-five youth and guardians. We used email, text, and phone calls to be able to reach people. Um, we also provided gift card incentives, um, to be able to make sure that we could talk to people that had a variety of perspectives. Um, you'll notice on the, the slides that all responses are on a ten-point scale, and the standard deviation, which is just showing how much variability there is, is in a, um, line on each bar graph. And then there's more details in the appendix. Any questions about the JAC or the evaluation study overview, before I hand it over to Lindsay, who led the project and will walk through the results? Alright.
Okay, so Sarah said we had, um, a lot of research questions, twenty, they kind of boiled down to twenty-one questions. Um, for purposes of this presentation, we kind of created an abridged version of, um, the full slide deck, so we kind of highlighted the different questions we'd be focusing on today. So, those are how many youth are referred to the JAC? What needs are identified by the JAC? What actions does the JAC recommend? Is the JAC providing timely intervention? Does the JAC have adequate resources? Are youth and guardians satisfied and engaged? Do youth improve after diversion? And do youth recidivate after going to the JAC? Okay, so, kicking off these abridged findings, I do want to make a note that these slides are pretty packed with information. Um, I'll be kind of going through each piece, 'cause I'm sure a lot of you will be able to read some of them. So apologies there, but when you're able to kind of look at the information, it should be pretty logical. First one, how many youth are referred to the JAC? Um, so, JAC referrals, like Sarah said, come from the Douglas County Attorney's Office. All youth are referred to the JAC from the Douglas County Attorney, um, unless, um, the youth is detained, if they're currently court-involved or if they're on probation in the past twelve months. Um, JAC referrals align with best practice in terms of, um, recommending that low-moderate-risk youth be, um, assessed for diversion. Um, on the right there with the kind of dots, the line graph, um, you can see referral rates have remained relatively stable. And we do see, uh, an uptick in two thousand and sixteen, mostly due to an increase in truancy referrals. Um, on the bottom there, we have referrals broken out by police type, those four police types that Sarah went over. Um, delinquency is, um, the largest case type that the JAC assesses. Truancy here, we can see some variation, and we can see that uptick, um, we see above. Uh, they are from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. Now, these referral numbers for truancy that we're showing here do include those, um, cases that the JAC is helping the Douglas County Attorney review for kind of research purposes and trying to figure out what the barriers are to attendance. Um, the actual number of truancy referrals that are being assessed for diversion at the JAC are about two hundred, so just something to keep in mind there. Um, we have dual-involved and then parent referral, and we can see there, um, parent referral cases are actually going down, um, likely as a result of increased awareness of community services. So, families are looking to, looking to community services rather than, um, uh, referring their youth to Douglas County Attorney.
So, the top, uh, corner, right corner?
Top right.
The referral rate?
Yep.
My understanding is there's some ties to the arrest rate with that. Is that fair?
Yes, yes, so arrests are referred to the Douglas County Attorney. Then the Douglas County Attorney is referring any youth who is currently detained, has a current court case, or has been on probation last twelve months to the JAC.
So, that, that could run with the arrest rate, so, citation.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yep, so if arrests go down, referrals to the JAC will go down. Okay, so, the JAC, um, gets referrals from the Douglas County Attorney, and they're assessing these youth, um, to determine their eligibility for diversion, but also, what needs these youth have? Um, how can we help these youth so they don't reoffend, um, in the future? So, there are a number of assessments that the JAC uses. Um, and, uh, youth can be assessed by any of five assessments, it really just depends on their case type. Um, we have some results here for the assessments. Um, the first one is the YLS, which is a youth, uh, level of service assessment. This is an assessment for delinquency cases, really looking at criminogenic risks and needs. So, um, the risk of the youth reoffending and what, what kind of areas of needs does this youth have? So, we can see that this assessment has different areas. Um, we have an overall rank there, so you can see, at least in two thousand and eighteen, sixty-one percent of the youth assessed were considered low-risk. Thirty-three percent were moderate, and six percent were high. And then we have different areas, so, you can see that leisure and rec and substance abuse areas, youth are scoring as high-risk more often in those areas. So, just to give you an example of kind of what these areas are, the example of leisure and rec would be kind of use of free time, organized activities. Substance abuse, obviously, would be drug use, alcohol use, and its interference in their life. Um, so we have all these different areas for the YLS assessment. We are seeing some group differences in, uh, overall risk levels. So, kind of the youngest youth, as well as the oldest youth, um, assessed are, do tend to score as moderate to high more often. Um, we're also seeing that black youth and Hispanic, Latino youth are scoring moderate to high-risk more often than white youth. And we're also seeing bad difference in the education and employment area specifically. So, giving you a couple examples of education employment area would be disruptive classroom behavior, truancy-related issues, low achievement problems with peers. Another assessment is the DPS, which is the Diagnostic Predictive Scale. Um, this is really assessing mental health needs. Um, there are five areas of this assessment. Um, you can see that youth are scoring as, um, so these are, is the mental health need absent, possible or present? Present there is the red. You can see that youth are scoring with present mental health needs in the disruptive and anxiety areas of this assessment more often. Those would be, disruptive would be, for example, operational defiant, attention deficit, conduct-related, um, anxiety would be, moraphobias, general anxiety, panic attacks, those sorts of things. We also have a piece on this assessment assessing suicidal ideations or attempts. Um, during the assessment process, if a youth brings up, um, suicidal ideations or past attempts, there is a safety plan that gets created with that juvenile services specialist, with that, uh, youth and guardian. Kind of having them, um, kind of write out who they can, who they can go to when they're struggling with those sorts of thoughts, um, identifying even a mental health therapist that, um, they can set an appointment up with. Um, in terms of the DPS assessment, we are seeing, um, at least in the substance abuse area, that white youth are more likely to score with possible or present issues related to substance abuse than black or Hispanic with you.
Uh, I'm sorry, is the DPS info in here?
Um, let's see, yeah.
Just the one, okay.
Oh, yeah, on the one pager, yes, yep. Um, and then, uh, there's also an assessment, the AIM, the absenteeism intervention management assessment. And this is really just looking at factors related to truancy. So, we have, um, kind of the ten top factors there. Top factors primarily relate to parents unable or unwilling to enforce school expectations, issues related to the morning routine, maybe no monitoring, alarm clock issues, or the student refusing to get up or attend school. There are also a couple other assessments that are more, um, meetings. Uh, so they have, they'll have a school meeting for truancy, um, and then they do involve youth to come into the Youth Impact Meeting, where, um, various experts in different areas talk with the youth and guardian and kind of figure out the best next steps and what the, that need means moving forward. Okay, so based on assessment, the JAC makes recommendations. The JAC recommends actions based on assessment results, diversion eligibility. Um, they can be activity-based, so they can recommend diversion, for example. Um, they can be non-activity-based, so they may recommend a warning letter, or that the youth is not eligible for diversion, and that would go back to the Douglas County Attorney. Uh, recommendations vary by case type, but for the most part, recommendations are diversion, um, no further action or warning letter. Um, so you can see for delinquency cases, sixty-eight percent in two thousand and eighteen were recommended for diversion, twenty-three percent were recommended for a warning letter, and then nine percent were not eligible for diversion. And the not-eligible bucket, that would include, um, youth who the Douglas County Attorney requests back. Um, they may have gotten a new charge, um, before they were assessed, so they may request that case back. Um, parent referral cases, for the most part, no further action. Um, a lot of times with these, the youth and guardian maybe has an interest in doing the assessment or, um, not responding to when the JAC reaches out to that. Truancy cases, seventy-six percent, um, diversion, sixteen percent nolay pross, so just, that means no further action, essentially similar to a warning letter. And then eight percent not eligible for diversion. Dual-involved, um, forty-one percent nolay pross with no additional service recommendations. Twenty-eight percent diversion, twenty-two percent not eligible, and nine percent nolay pross with additional service recommendations.
So, what, what does that look like, nolay pross? So, they, they weigh the case, but then they say, they just recommend these are services that we recommend with your new charge.
Got the nolay pross, yes.
Right, that's just for the dual impact, when there's that team meeting, and that's when there's an open child welfare matter, so there's someone there to case manage the services, or more related to family services than individual youth services.
So, we got this, we got a, I always, we got a gap of a needs assessment, but if somebody does a needs assessment somewhere, you, what's done here, yeah, at the, at the dual.
On the dual, that's, that is something that we're working with Dr. Spahn on right now, doing something a little bit more formal. Right now, it's an, an information sharing process between all of the parties that are currently working or formerly working with that family, bring together their current assessments.
Analyze each case, isn't that like a?
Right, and so, we're, we're, this year, implementing a, a more formal process to that.
Okay.
Other question about the data collected over five years. Have we been collecting that data, or is that some data from other places also?
So, the data we collected was the data the JAC collects. Um, so they're doing these assessments, so they have the assessment data, um, and they have what recommendations they're making to the Douglas County Attorney. Does that answer that?
So, this is reasonable and rational, not just Douglas County?
This is just Douglas County, yep. Um, and then I guess I skipped over, so we do have some survey results related to this area. We asked, um, youth and guardians, to what extent they agree that the JAC gave them an opportunity to make sure their charges wouldn't negatively impact their future. Um, and with guardians, uh, we have the youth wording on these items, but for guardians, we're asking them, for example, the JAC gave, um, my child an opportunity to make sure their charges wouldn't negatively impact their future. So, you can see we have a ten-point scale on these, um, pretty high agreement there with both youth and guardians. Okay, moving on to timely intervention. Question, is the JAC providing timely intervention? So, I'm sure as all of you know, the importance of, um, timely intervention with youth in the Juvenile Justice System. Uh, timeliness is critical, um, really for the youth to connect that action to the follow-up services. And really to increase the effectiveness of the intervention on needs and future behavior. Um, some best practices recommend about ten business days, from citation to assessment, um, and three to six month, three to six months for a diversion plan completion. Um, to the right here, we have a couple bars that are basically showing you the timeline of a delinquency case. We're comparing two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen. Um, so the top there is the two thousand and eighteen, so most recent. You can see, um, the timeline has shortened a bit on average, um, going from a hundred and seventy-seven to a hundred and fifty-six days. Um, the largest reduction there occurred from the point of service to the point of discharge. Um, but both years are well within the best practice in terms of how long a diversion plan should last. We did see some improvement from citation to assessment, um, forty-nine to forty-six days, but as I had stated, um, that is still much higher than best practice.
What is best practice, takes?
Um, yeah, about ten days. And so, a lot can happen between citation to assessment, so a lot, obviously, there's more factors than just the JAC here. Um, there can be police, Douglas County Attorney, in terms of the JAC getting a youth in for assessment. It can be related to their caseloads. Maybe the family isn't responding in a timely fashion to the JAC reaching out. There can be a lot of factors there, so just something to keep in mind. We did ask on the survey about timeliness for youth and guardians. So the question was, to what extent they agree that the process of the JAC moved along quickly enough for me? You can see there is quite a bit of agreement there with youth and guardians that the process moved along quickly. We also looked at some qualitative responses, so just open-ended responses at the end of the survey. And had some themes that were related to this area. You can see here, we have some dots basically showing you how many people said that theme. And one dot represents one person. So we had a lot of responses on the survey, so you're probably saying that's not a lot of people. But we did still want to bring some of these themes up since we did ask things so open-ended that when people, when people are kind of bringing up the same theme, we think it's still worth noting, I guess. So some said didn't take too long, easy to schedule, enough time to finish. Some were bringing up some issues of feeling like it did take a bit of a long time. And some mentions of delayed communication with the JAC specialist. In interviews with stakeholders, this was a topic that got brought up quite a bit. Most stakeholders just mentioning that really the need for timeliness in the juvenile justice system overall, inciting increased need there. Okay. Next question is, does the JAC have adequate resources? So I talked a little bit about caseloads in terms of timely intervention, so we'll get into caseloads a bit here. Overall, based on the data, we've looked at also other local research. The JAC is a good investment. The JAC saves the system and taxpayers anywhere between one point four to four point five million dollars annually by diverting youth from formal processing. Case management is offered by most juvenile assessment centers. Research, research suggests that case management should be more intensive for higher-risk, high-need youth. And that case management is effective at reducing recidivism when it includes client engagement strategies and matching of the services to what the youth need. To the right there, we are looking at budget-related statistics. So you can see their total budget with the line graph over the years, about a two percent increase from seventeen eighteen to nineteen twenty. On the right there, you can see, based on this, the time of this data, the majority of it was county general fund, I believe now it's a hundred percent county general fund. And then, not surprising, most expenses, eighty-eight percent of expenses are related to staff. And this, this data is based on thirteen staff members. So five juvenile service specialists, two attendance specialists, one behavioral health specialist, one dual-involved specialist, one data analyst, one receptionist, one administrative grants coordinator, and one director. We also looked at average caseloads by specialist by case type. At the time of this data, there weren't any parent referral cases, as if you remember back, there aren't a lot of those annually. So not surprising that at point in time snapshot, snapshot, there wasn't any at that time. Delinquency on average, about fifty-five cases per specialist. And then the green versus the gray bar there is, the green is, these youth are on diversion, the gray is they're pending an assessment or a meeting. On average for truancy, at least at this snapshot, was a hundred and forty-four cases per specialist. Dual involved on average was forty-four cases. So as you can see, pretty high caseloads. We mentioned a little bit about the literature and more intensive case management for higher-risk youth. With the caseloads where they're at right now, that really doesn't give much room for the JAC to be offering any more intensive case management than they currently are unless resources were increased.
Let me, so the answer is, is. What's the, so you had, you had the number of ten for.
Yeah.
Best days, what's the best, best practice with caseload?
Yeah, it was hard to find an exact estimate based on the specifics of what exactly the JAC does. But based on research, I saw anywhere around fifteen to twenty would allow for more intensive case management. But it really depended on exactly how intensive we're being with the case manager and what that's going to look like.
So they could, you think that if they added another person, that would, would you think one person or two people, or what do you think that would?
Well, let me add on, because I had another question. Can you, I just wanted people to see this, so go to thirteen, can you go back to thirteen? Okay, my question is, so the overall rank would, so right now you have thirty, thirty-nine percent high to moderate. So if you go back to sixteen, with the addition of resource, is that just for managing what we got? Or would that allow you to handle a high, moderate risk key also? Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, it would be for more intense case management for that forty percent. Isn't that, isn't.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Do you have the space?
So it's not per se, more numbers wouldn't let you increase the risk, it'll allow better service for the moderate to high risk?
Is there, is there, is there office space that's, I mean, are you guys, do you have any room that you could find some, some place to put another person?
We need to look at, you know, the overall results of this and, and how we would need to move stuff.
Because I would think that if, I mean, if we're really looking at reducing the population at the youth center, increasing the resources there, I mean, to me. Hmm?
I don't know if you got the right time there yet, little bit.
You know, Patrick, maybe one of the discussions that as a system we need to have is the truancy referrals. Because when you, when you take out the truancy referrals, and if they did straight delinquency, they would be staffed appropriately doing twenty twenty-five. But adding that truancy referrals, because there are thousands of referrals here. So is there some better system or process as a county we can do for those truancy referrals to meet the needs of those families and youth than necessarily the JAC?
And then Pandora's Box quickly to just kind of recognize is the YLS the right tool at this system point.
Right.
Not a part of this here, but I would wonder if there are better tools to be used at diversion since that is generally a post-credicated tool, but not for today. But goes with what you're saying, what is the true, true risk level?
Right, because one of the other things that we can talk about too, that Sean and I have talked about is, do you go to some type of screening tool at that upfront to screen out the proverbial low-hanging fruit? And only do the full-fledged assessments based upon that screen? Would you then allow more time to, I mean, get those warning letters out based upon a screening tool rather than doing the full assessment? Are there some things we can do on that end to help with the, the caseloads? Because those caseloads, there's no way one person can handle fifty-five.
Right.
I mean, there just isn't. So we've got to, to come up with some avenues of, of looking at changing that.
Isn't part of the, the question is, is how the ratio and ethnic disparities is how that flow occurs as, as we go through the, the system point? And I presume that you, you have some of that information in the background, but this isn't presented here.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have all the data on.
What does that tell us?
Well, so we have, are you talking about in terms of.
In terms of minorities being available to take advantage of the JAC? I, I know there's, there's some upfront, you know, stoppages that are automatic, but is there any trend that you're seeing? What, what can we say that we can do to better provide that type of service for minorities?
I guess like, I had mentioned too with the assessments, we are seeing that black youth and Hispanic Latino youth are scoring as moderate to high risk more often. But when we were looking at recommendations there, I'm not sure if I said this verbally, the difference we're seeing in delinquency was Hispanic Latino youth being not eligible for diversion more often than white youth. That was kind of the difference we saw there in terms of group differences.
Do you know the reason? What was the reason they were more often not eligible?
Yeah, so our analyses allow us to kind of point to the differences. The reason for the differences, not as much unfortunately.
I mean, it doesn't say like what made them ineligible like a prior charge or something, that also might point to racial and ethnic disparity.
Well, we did also see that those youth are scoring as moderate to high risk more often. So, but then it begs the question, is that an assessment area issue we need to look further into?
Which, I was trying to say, you don't know if it's a hard correlation, but that's the thing I got here. I mean, there's, assessments are getting questioned all over the country. But that's not to say that the assessment is totally bad. I think the question is to look at the assessment and, you know, the people making decisions and see if there's some question in there that's triggering more toward, particularly with some of this stuff where you look at.
Yeah, the question is whether the hard stop that would prevent someone.
Well, no, I mean, you might, like, family circumstances and this.
No, you're right. I've been in YLS trainings where kids have scored between seven and twenty-seven in one room, so it's a great question. Questions that lead to racial, ethnic disparities in any of these categories because the interviewer is choosing something different based on their experience and not something more concrete.
Yeah, and in terms of the areas of the assessment, we were seeing those racial group differences in that education and employment area. So that was, back on that, that was focused on disruptive classroom behavior, truancy, low achievement, so.
Which is awful, right?
Right.
Because we know the disparities that exist there.
Exactly.
So, I mean, the only point I, I think is fair to say, you have that, but I know there's like other trainings that go on, so you might be able to train, you know, implicit bias, train your way to be able to monitor that, but you know, it's fair to say, you know, you take a look at the tool.
I don't know if you're going to point this out, but just, there's a lot to be said about the different assessment tools that have been used. And this is different than the one that screens in and out of detention. This isn't a punitive tool. This is the tool that's used to determine what, what are those needs of those kids that we can put supports in place for. So a high risk isn't a punitive indication, it's an indication of more services needed or more support needed. Just want to make sure that that's.
I did want to add to that conversation we were having about truancy earlier. We won't, for today's a bridge deck, we won't go into completion rates. We wanted to go into improvement after diversion and recidivism. But for completion rates, for truancy, we're seeing completion rates much lower for diversion for those truancy youths. So I think that also points to the need to relook at how we're handling truancy youth through the JAC and in the system overall.
Could you, I'm going to say this, but just verify I'm right, so let's make sure everybody knows, so like, they don't see the truancy youth until that kid, I guess you say your average is twenty to forty.
Oh no, that was just, I was just throwing that out.
Okay. But the kid has to hit twenty before they get to you.
Right, the reports don't go to the county attorney until after they meet that legal threshold.
So that's the point, so the, the kid's after the twenty before they get there. And then I think it's fair to say too that, you know, there's some pre-discussion in trying to really understand this. There is probably a question to us because at that point, all this is volunteer. So the question is, do we got to do a better job trying to coach the community to take any services? At one point, I guess my understanding, we used to do that, do we get to get there as a whole? Because you got this stuff on the table, nobody takes it. And then you're seeing with some of this other stuff, how this truancy thing parlay's itself down. So I don't know how to be connected that so.
And then the last thing on the slide was just qualitative findings from the interviews and the survey results. So youth and guardians mentioning that, kind of related to caseloads, that they would like some more follow-up from JAC specialists. And that in some cases, a few people mentioned maybe there are issues with getting a hold of the JAC specialist. And then stakeholders were mentioning in interviews that they're concerned about the JAC's caseload being too high as well as, at least at the time of interviews, there was concern among stakeholders about making sure the JAC has consistent funding. So moving on to, are youth guardians satisfied and engaged? Throughout the JAC processes, youth satisfaction and engagement is critical to them in their process, in their assessment meeting with the youth, as well as through the other meetings and assessments they're conducting. We asked about satisfaction and engagement on the youth and guardian survey. You can see we have a few items up there. The first one was, going through the JAC process helped motivate me to change my behavior. So youth agreeing highly with that, guardians agreeing less so and a little more variability. And you'll kind of see that throughout, that guardians are maybe agreeing a little less than youth, although both still pretty high agreement. In general, I was satisfied with my experience at the JAC, and then I wanted to follow through on all of the recommendations the JAC made. So again, out of a ten-point scale, pretty high agreement there. On the bottom left, we have some qualitative results around the questions we asked youth and guardians about what they were most satisfied and least satisfied with. Were most satisfied, they liked the clear and transparent process. A lot of comments about the excellent staff, they felt like the staff was helpful, nonjudgmental, helped them a lot. Personalized approach, they thought that their input and their voice was heard throughout the assessment. They thought that they got the help and support they needed to cope with change. It was an eye-opening experience and it gave them a second chance. Less satisfied with, a lot of people for that question wrote nothing or thought they had no complaints. Those that had some things they were less satisfied with mentioned that they were, they weren't satisfied that they got a citation in the first pa, first place, prefered didn't happen. The amount of follow-up, again, maybe wanting some more check-ins with the JAC specialist. The length of time to complete the process. And some mentioned maybe some confusion about what was supposed to happen before the JAC and then what they needed to do to kind of meet those JAC requirements after. And then finally, we asked, what one word would you use to describe the JAC? We have results by youth and guardian. These are word clouds, so the larger the word, the more people said it. I know that's very small. In general, youth are saying helpful, great, good. Some are saying life-changing, these are some smaller words, so fewer youth are saying those. Guardians, good, helpful, excellent. Guardians were more likely to use a little more negative words than youth were. There's a word up there that says waste of time, so it's a smaller word, so fewer people said it, but there were some more negative words on the guardian side than youth. Do youth improve after diversion? In the interviews, we asked if youth and guardians feel like they would be better off, worse off, or the same since going to the JAC or because they went to the JAC? You can see seventy-six percent said they would be worse off if they hadn't gone to the JAC, they feel like they'd be headed down that same path. And about twelve percent said they'd be better off or worse, or better off or the same. And that was mostly, people saying those were mostly those who did not complete the JAC requirements. On the survey, we have several items here. You can see across the whole survey, really, we're seeing very positive results. A lot of agreement with the items. Again, you're seeing a little less agreement with guardians and a little more variability. Those items were, the JAC helped me make better choices and decisions. Going through the JAC helped me change my attitude and mindset. The JAC helped me make improvements. The JAC helped me handle conflict and problems better. I feel like things are better at home since working with the JAC, and I feel like things are better at school since working with the JAC. We were able to look at some attendance data for truancy cases. We weren't able to collect school data based on confidentiality concerns, but this is some data that the JAC collects as part of their process to handle a truancy case. So we were able to look at attendance before the JAC as well as during. So, we were able to look at attendance before the JAC as well as during the JAC process. So, you can see some improvement there in terms of days attended, percent of days attended, percent of non- youth absences. And then finally, some qualitative results. Many saying the JAC helped with switching their mindset, helped them with coping and helped them make changes. Some said it improved their hope and self-esteem and some saying, a few saying no real changes. It felt like some, just something that they had to do.
So, the next one. You all get a kid, you make the assessment, you refer largely, it would be the kid and sort of listening after parent. I guess my question is, I'm just wondering, is there just something inherent that this thing with parent thinking, oh, it didn't do any good? The kid's like, yeah, is it because they're not active or they don't come back?
If I was a kid, I'd answer everything straight because I wouldn't want you to bring me back, so I guess you can't.
Yeah, I was curious what's the.
I don't think that we were gonna bring them back.
Or they'll get in trouble if they don't, I mean, I don't, you don't know, you don't know, but if we, you know, is that how would a kid answer it?
Yeah, they answered that way as well in the interviews when we were face-to-face with them, so we could kind of dig deeper. And we got the same positive results, so, yeah.
So, the parents are just wanting more, they expect the kid to flip over the diet.
Parent expectations are, those are the calls I get when parents are, are not exactly happy. And a lot of those are around expectation. They want their kids to have an ankle monitor, they want their kids to be locked up in DCYC. There's a lot of parent expectations which are of a punitive nature. And, and because we don't do punitive programming, that, that's often a disconnect between what we do and parents. So, I think that that's reflective.
Yeah, we had some qualitative results come through on the interviews. And some disagreement among guardians, some saying they wanted the JAC to be stricter with their child. Oh, and then one, a couple of group differences with the survey results we didn't mention. Youth and guardians rated these items higher when they successfully completed diversion. And then younger youth and their guardians rated improvement lower. And then finally, do youth recidivate after going to the JAC? So, recidivism, no surprise, is a common metric used in evaluating juvenile justice programs. Research findings in the JAC data we looked at both indicate that diversion programming is successful in reducing recidivism. Certain services like group counseling, cognitive behavioral skill building, in the literature suggest the most positive impact on recidivism. These kind of circles to the right there are looking at recidivism rates for delinquency cases. Approximately one out of four youth assessed by the JAC for delinquency, recidivate within one year. And when we're saying recidivate, we mean non-traffic charge within one year of going to the JAC. Recidivism rates are highest for youth who do not successfully complete the JAC requirements. And youth who are not eligible for diversion. Rates were lower for youth who completed requirements or received a warning letter. So, these results together really kind of showing positive JAC impact. I wanna divert your attention to the graph with the green and red bars. Because that's kind of showing that recidivism is linked back to that risk level that the JAC identifies in their YLS assessment. So, you're seeing recidivism rates nearly two times lower for youth who successfully completed the JAC when YLS levels were low or moderate. And then when YLS results were high, we're not seeing as much of that benefit in terms of whether or not they completed or not. Recidivism stays relatively the same.
Give me the context meaning of orientation and when it says attitude and orientation.
Yeah. So, that, those items are like antisocial, defying authority, little concern for others.
That's orientation.
Yeah. Attitudes and orientation, so that's the construct.
That's the label that the YLS has.
Okay.
Yeah, so over here, we're looking at for youth with high, high-risk youth, if they have a high, if they're high-risk in attitudes and orientation. Their recidivism rate is higher than if they were high-risk in leisure and rec, for example. And then on the left there, we asked a question related to recidivism on the survey. I think I'm less likely to get in trouble with the law because I went to the JAC. Again, we're seeing pretty positive results there, guardians agreeing less again than, than youth. And then in terms of recidivism rates, we are seeing, in terms of group differences, male youth recidivate more often than female youth. Black, Hispanic, Latino, and Native American youth recidivate more often than white youth. Okay, recommendations, so these recommendations are based on the whole set of results. So, in terms of the JAC approach, we'd recommend continue the current hiring and training practices for juvenile specialists. The result showed a lot of positive results in terms of the JAC's process and the juvenile specialists. So, continuing the same training and hiring practices that are kind of driving that satisfaction. Assessment, continue efforts, so Sean had mentioned that there's current work underway to create more structured assessments for truancy and dealing with all youth. With the Nebraska Center for Justice Research, so continuing those efforts and ensuring that all assessments are normed for all youth. And making sure they're not differentially predictive for youth of color. Communication, ensuring that all youth and guardians understand the JAC process and expectations. For the most part, it seems like based on the results, they are understanding the process. There are some that maybe are a little confused still. So, we would recommend considering an online portal for families to access their plan, their paperwork, and kind of keep track of their progress. To help increase completion and excess, success. And kind of going back to those results on youth and guardians saying they wanted more follow-up. If they have maybe a portal to kind of look at their progress and what they need to be doing, that might solve for some of that. Case management, offer more intensive case management and support for higher-risk youth to increase success. In order, like I mentioned, for JAC specialists to do that, they need resources to decrease current caseloads. Timeliness, I mentioned timeliness needs some improvement. So, I'd recommend identifying the key causes of that lag between citation and assessment. There's a lot of factors there and kind of working with system stakeholders since it goes beyond the JAC kind of that case timeline. And working to pilot and implement solutions to streamline the full process. And then in terms of data structure, optimizing the current data system, ensuring the collection of the critical implementation and impact variables. And ensuring that that's being collected across case types, case types. And then incorporating youth and guardian perceptions into data collection efforts.
What's a critical implementation impact?
Yeah, so kind of the results that we're presenting, some of the results, they were only able to present for delinquency cases, for example, which, I mean, that is their primary case type. So, the data is built out most for that case, makes sense. But ensuring that other cases, we also have that impact data to determine effectiveness. That makes sense? And so like recidivism, recidivism we only have for delinquency cases.
Okay. So, you got robust delinquency, but don't have it for the other round?
Truancy is pretty built out, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, parent referral cases, that's probably the least built out, but then there's very few of those. And I think we're gonna keep seeing a decrease in that with those. I don't know if that's necessarily worth the resources there, but there could probably be more, some more data collection for doing that.
Okay, so let me ask case manager, because you got it wrapped up, but it almost seemed like you got to split it based on what I asked you earlier. So, basically, for what you said, the second half of that, in order for JAC specialists to provide more support. And resources would need to be, so basically, in this with the top half, it seemed like you're saying to be able to get more in-depth services now, you're gonna need more. But if you had more resources, you could increase the risk of kid that you're managing? I'm seeing two different sentences there. Because the bottom, the bottom sentence, in order for the JAC specialists, that reinforces what was in there about more services to truancy and like that. But at the same point at one, the question implies to me that if you had more, you could take on a higher risk here.
I would say right now, the recommendation is around the high, the youth scoring high risk currently. Because we're seeing back on those results that we want to improve, want to improve this here. So, if they successfully complete, we're seeing lower recidivism there. So, I think those high-risk youth there is currently seeing need some more support. So, I'd probably focus there first.
All about more research to the current.
Yeah, right.
Anybody know how high-risk youth there are in probation? So, is there on probation rather than on diversion with their?
I, I don't know how, the comparison to diversion, I don't know. But I, our recidivism overall is about twenty-two percent. It's a very, very small number of the really, really high-risk kids. And our really high-risk kids, we're talking at the top end of the YLS score, is a different story.
So, what is the JAC's death of high-risk? Because you, when you're on the filter, what's the JAC kind of been high-risk JACs on?
It's the YLS determines the risk, not we don't determine the risk.
Like Lizzie pointed out before, the ones that get referred to this, I mean, I don't know, we're not hiding a high-risk group of kids that we're not sending to the JAC right now. They're pretty much getting everything.
Let me clarify, so I guess in this world, when somebody hear high-risk, I'm thinking they automatically go to high-risk like. And this has been my interpretation when this, when this asked, they go to high-risk like this kid should be in a detention center. That's not this kid.
No.
So, define high-risk in this world.
Yeah, so when I'm talking about high-risk in terms of the JAC.
They just got high needs from YLS.
Defined by the YLS criteria, it's, there's an actual scale. There's an actual scale.
So, it's not dangerous felony, gun charge, high-risk, it's high-risk social factor.
Because the kids that have been detained, they, they don't come through me to refer to the JAC anyway.
No, I just wanted to, just make sure it's high-risk, social factors, that this kid is very vulnerable, high-risk.
Of that scale, she had those, like rec and leisure, education, employment, that.
No, I'm, I'm more saying for the.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. That's what the risk is. And just to be clear, there are high-risk kids who are recommended for diversion. So, the difference between a youth who would be recommended for diversion and who would be recommended for court supervision. Is that, that youth's responsiveness to programming. So, if a youth says, I'm not doing this, I will not do this, and they're high-risk, and the parent says they're out of control, I can't get them to come home at night. Then we would recommend court supervision for that, that youth, that wouldn't be a voluntary supervision. If we have a high-risk youth, like we just staffed last week, a youth scored twenty-six on the YLS. And the recommendation was for diversion because the youth said, you know, I really do want to change, I want an opportunity here. And so, we were able to work with that youth who's scoring a twenty-six.
So, go back to. Fifteen. What's the, so timing this is at the end of recommendation, what's the, if we implement this, what are we going, what are we trying to dig at timing this part? Because to get to ten days, that's, I'm just wondering, who's at ten days, Florida?
Ten days is just a segment of this.
No, but I mean, if, if the best practice, you said it's ten days, that's an average. So, somebody doing it faster, somebody, how, how would we, from what you've done so far, what, how do we get to ten days or somewhere closer? Because I, I got an idea of how I think we get there. One's obvious, but I'm just curious from, from that and digging in, where, how do you get to ten days?
I think, I think that's why our recommendation was more around identifying the key causes of the lag. Because there's so many factors that, so if, if they determine that, well, caseloads are actually a huge reason why that leg to assessment is there.
Well, your leg, the leg here is.
Caseloads wouldn't impact arrests too.
To assessment, yes, that's.
You gotta schedule what time.
Right. Yeah, so.
So, who, who are the, who are the, obviously one player.
So, around a month to scheduling assessment.
Well, no, so you got citation, referral, case, and then assess facility. The only player we know right now is the county attorney's office, who are the other players in that round?
Law enforcement getting it into the system and from the system getting it to the county attorney's office.
That's where I meant, that that would be the ten days we're talking about, so the assessments wouldn't come into play. I wonder if the other jurisdictions have pre-arrested version and stuff, or there's less being referred. I don't, I would have, I think, look at the jurisdictions to know, right?
So, I'm just saying, those are the two big players from that.
I'm looking at that.
So, somewhere in there is gonna solve, okay.
Now, what, what some states have done, instead of doing the process we do, and we do have a statute, is that civil citation statute. Then for cases that are going to diversion, law enforcement has the ability to give the civil citation, which then automatically goes over to their diversion system. And never goes to the county attorney or gets processed into any type of computer system. Because some of this probably is a lot of computer system delays, somebody's got to input that information on that ticket to the system, all those type things.
And I will point out too, our timeline's only as good as the data, right? So, for some of these, it is possible that the dates input for these different stops along the way were the date that that data got input. And not necessarily the date that something happened. So, there are some limitations there in analysis as well.
So, I think what Kim's saying, exactly where I'm going, I think if you knew what the other jurisdictions are, that could go from police officer to county attorney in ten days. And it's likely ones with pre-arrest diversion or civil citation, so they're less going. And then exactly what they computerize makes it faster right now. It's, to, to shorten that, first fifteen and sixteen.
We've had this discussion a couple of times, but, so my understanding, and you were correct. When it happened in oh-four, the county attorney's office was kind of a safety net because we didn't know what we were getting into. So, now we got two oh-four, fourteen, almost twenty years. It's fair to say, we know what we got. And my question always, what does a lawyer have that a regular person can't have to verify if that kid's, just to cut the time? I mean, it's a valid question.
Because we have none there, right? So, we have no really pre-arrest diversions, I think is likely the difference in jurisdictions. We have none, so anything which might reduce that or a civil citation.
Anybody else?
I'll just kind of, I have one more slide here on, just so you know, kind of the deliverables that we created based on this. So, like I said, you, we just showed you the bridge slide deck, there is a full slide deck targeting all twenty-one of those questions we went over earlier. There is a booklet that I handed out, and then we also created a toolkit. This is really for the JAC, it was kind of DIY recommendations in terms of if they want to continue pieces of this evaluation in the future. And especially if they want to continue all or part of that survey, we can have to review the guardians, so. And then in the appendix, we have all of the Youth and Guardian survey items. We have the wording for the youth item versus the guardian item. And then just a list of literature sources that were reviewed, the full citations are in that toolkit. Any other questions?
Is this gonna be before the county board, is this gonna be the county board presentation?
I mean, my hope is, I needed to, everybody see it, let them soak it in.
But it's not gonna be the same presentation?
Might, might be. I don't know if there's gonna be any tweaks between there, but there's a, there's a couple of audiences I'm thinking of. I mean, one, you got, I don't know if you do it jointly, you do it separately, you got, you got JDOT and then you got the OIS. But it's gonna have, it's gonna have to take a community tour. I don't know if it'll take one or two meetings just to see because, just to, just to put it there.
I just didn't know if you wanted to abbreviate it, the county board, because how long was it, how long was it? I mean, it's fine for us, I mean, it helped my attention, but I'm just saying that, that it's, especially with child and youth, I mean, I just don't.
Well, no, this is, no, that's why we, there's only thing to do the deep dive in here. Now, I guess you have to refer people here to do it now. I guess the question is, that's a base. I mean, I think the conversation is just what key things need to be pulled out. I, I doubt if you need to do the whole background piece. So, you can pull the key things in the recommendation piece and fill some of the background stuff in. But, you know, my, my goal is to have the deep one here. Because the question that I guess, I guess to think about is. Cause the question that I guess, I guess to think about is, um, what's the cost of this implementation? I mean, just see it flat out with the cost of the cost, what can you do, what's possible, where would that go? But, I mean, I'm, I'm probably saying at least three more presentations just to let people be aware of it. It's, you know, cause we've been saying this is what happened for a year, now we gotta let it out, let it see, so.
No, I think, don't get me wrong, I think that's a good presentation for this venue, I'm just worried that if it was the county board meeting, it would be.
I agree.
You'd get some grumpy people.
Something to work through. Well, yeah, I don't, I don't see it coming out there till. May, early May, so you got some time to work through.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Mark, take it to your question when you go through the full slide deck. They do have a lot of the demographic data broken down by race, because one of the, the questions we had discussion of is, when you look at citations, what is the percentage based upon race and then the filings? And then you look at, okay, Jack referrals, are they getting ten percent of minority while fifty percent of the citations are? I mean, are they matching it, just to make sure that from a, an R E D standpoint, we're clicking on all those cylinders?
Well, I, I do understand that there, there is a kind of a no-go if someone has already been involved with the justice system.
No, where?
If, if someone is on probation, there's not an opportunity for them to.
If they're on probation.
Right.
You can't be on diversion and probation at the same time.
Right, even though, I mean, it might be something new, but it's still underneath the osprey's of probation, so they wouldn't be referred to the Jack.
Cause they have an attorney already handling it, not get in court, so a lot of times the new charge would, wouldn't even be filed on, cause that's duplicative, so.
Sure.
They already have that probation script.
Yeah, but my point is that, that by itself is a, a pathway where less are getting opportunity.
One thing we could talk about as a system is, right now, the cutoff is if you've been on probation, within twelve months of your referral to the, the Jack, you're not eligible. Should it be six months, should it be nine months, should it be known months, should it be any, that could be a systemic discussion point of, if you've successfully completed probation, should you have to wait another year or not? I mean, does that make sense, Mark, I mean, so if we are excluding kids because they've been on probation within the past year, is that good or is that bad?
And just to be clear on that, on that specific one, back to Commissioner Rogers' point, it, resource-wise, the reason that we have a year on that is we simply cannot service any more kids. Our, our specialists are over capacity now, double over capacity. So we had to, when we said, okay, former probation youth can be referred for assessment, we had to put some parameters around that because we can't, simply can't handle any more kids.
And if that's our why, then it's the system, we really need an answer, because that's not, right, that's not a, well, that's a blessing answering.
That so many are being referred, now, I guess the systemic question is how do we accommodate that?
And that's a good question.
Well, let me ask you this, is this the, am I right in assuming this pathway from what I learned from, so say for instance, kid, kid has twenty days. Kid, you said he had missed school twenty more days, um, car sends him to the Jack. They go through the process, if they make it, and if they don't make it, from some degree, they pull them back, and they go to the court, get filed on, likely, because of truancy. They likely will end up with youth because their birth is a truancy, is that fair?
On probation?
Yeah.
It depends.
But I, I guess the question I'm trying to say, is this, is this the, is this the birthplace of the status offender on probation?
Yeah, but they don't, so, just so everybody knows, they don't go to youth center, the status offenders don't go to youth center.
Right.
But to support the discussion about getting rid of the status offenders and focusing more of all of our resources on the children who are a risk to community safety, yes, that's where we should be. And I've got about between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five kids on probation for status offenses.
But it's safe to say the or, a good amount of origin comes.
A good amount of them are truancy, yeah, sometimes they're those ungovernables where parents are tired, but, um.
So which.
Not what free up resources for us, but free up resources for the Jack, but there has to be some other system point.
Alright, so which, and just tell me if my opinion's right, so to your question of, it's not hard, it takes your time, but this, this needs assessment thing, whatever's working there, is somewhere in the needs assessment, assessment thing for the pre-adjudicated that we hopefully want to try to get in, is those, are those similar assessments? This needs assessment that's always talked about, the needs assessment is talked about here, there, and in the A T D.
Not necessarily.
So you're talking about three different need possibilities?
We're talking about our, our kids, that, that we are talking about in terms of getting those kids services.
Right.
With the grant money, um, they're a higher-level kid, they're not, they're not, they're kids.
Filed on.
They've been filed.
But would you, you would still need some needs assessment for that?
Some way to determine what services, yes.
Which, could that same needs assessment be the same for this kid, for this truancy kid, the kid and the eight? Cause I hear it's needs assessment in three meetings, and I'm wondering, is that one needs assessment, or was it varied?
I think it varies.
I think it's varied.
Okay.
Depending upon what brought the kid to the, the front door. For instance, one of the evidence-based needs assessments that they use for truancy, there's two of them, the school refusal assessment survey and then the JIP. Are, are two that they use for that population, because it is not, Ryan, if you can help me out, it wasn't, um, normed for any criminogenic needs or risk. It was the needs of the family and the child, not, do you have a risk to reoffend? We don't care if that population is gonna reoffend, cause they haven't offended yet, so we're just looking at the, you know, internal.
So just like it's three different assessments, so here is gonna be three assessments when it stays, but it'll be a needs assessment.
And just to be clear, we don't use the Y L S for those youth with just truancies, we do not use that.
Okay.
Is there, is there a tool that's available for, for truancy?
That's, that's what, that's what Kim was just talking about, and the reason that we aren't doing that is we don't wanna pull those kids in for another process, so we've been meeting with them at school, and, and so that's part of why we need to put something else.
Yeah, that, that seems more hospitable if you do Y L S.
And Lancaster County has been piloting one of the tools for the last year or two, so I'm interested to see their data and their results from using one of these assessment tools for truancy kids.
Come on.
I was on the state website today, legislature, and I was kinda amazed to be reading some of the testimony on one of the juvenile bills down there. And come to find out that people testifying, including some of our senators, maybe know even less about some of this than I do. And I found that kinda funny, but some of those things came up here. People like me do not understand a lot of things. But one thing I read on there was, police officers may detain youth, but they're not arrested. But if they're detained for thirty, sixty, ninety days, that sounds like that's unconstitutional. So somebody needs to explain the difference between who, who, uh, points out that, that youth, or who charges that youth, who picks them up, and who detains them, and why? And why there's such a lag between the time they're detained and they're adjudicated? And it sounds like now somebody's making a unilateral decision to adjudicate themselves before they even get down there. So what I'm saying is the public needs to understand a better picture here, because it just, it sounds like the shell game in some cases.
I, listen, the only thing I can answer for you is that this is a big onion, and every time I think I know it, there's another layer that gets peeled. I said every, the only thing I can answer for sure is that this is a big onion, and every time I think I understand one layer, there's another layer that gets peeled. So I don't know if you ever totally understand unless you price it every day, the, the piece about, the latter piece you said, I would have to see the context. I'm not a lawyer, it sounds like there's constitutionality in this.
Well, that was one of the comments, policemen are not lawyers, but, you know, if I call nine one one, I say, hey, there's a kid in my yard, he's not supposed to be here. You know, I'd have a gun. But somebody detains him, he's not a lawyer, but he has to make a decision.
Well, the, the que, well, if I can take one piece, I think there's, there's some discussion around, is, you know, with that arrest piece and some of the speeding pieces, you know, that civil citation discussion, does that come back up now?
Well, and Larry, and we can talk later, but I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna have to say that you might have understood a bit of what you've heard today, cause the scenario you just gave isn't one that happens in Douglas County, um, likely not happening anywhere else in the state. So maybe next time we see each other, we can talk a little bit and try to.
It's not uniform, that's for sure.
Clean out what you're saying, cause it doesn't make sense to me.
Alright, thank you. Once, twice, thank you, we're working on the consolidated version. Well, probably a more, no, well, no.